Father God, you can't be angels around everyone according to your will and also Father God, be with our students. Fix their minds and let their minds be on pleasant things and pleasant thoughts. And I pray Father God that everything will work out from now until we meet again on August the ninth. And I pray Father God for your protection and I pray for your leadership within this meeting. In Jesus' most precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Banks. Ms. Yawn is not with us tonight. He had to be out of town for a meeting, so we do miss him, but we appreciate everybody else being here on the board. So with that, fellow board members, you have all been given a copy of the agenda to review. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I believe we accept the agenda.
Any discussion changes? All in favor?
Thank you, ma'am. As you'll see on our agenda, we have the minutes from the previous month's meeting for approval. You want to take a moment and review those minutes and... If there's no objection, we'll place these minutes on the consent agenda for approval at the monthly meeting following this one. All right. At this time, we have Mr. Rodney McKelvin.
McKelvin.
McKelvin, all right, here with us. He is the new director of the Satilla Regional Library, and he is here to address the board and introduce himself. Yes, sir.
Hi. I just wanted to come and introduce myself and talk to you all a little bit about the library and the direction that I want to take the library. And I want to start out by saying thank you to your support for the library. I know that you guys are a great supporter of the library. We appreciate that, the financial support and the other support that you give us. Coming into the library system, I want to be more inclusive with the library. I want to try and get more people to come in, deal with needs assessment, and also work on a strategic plan and try and find ways that we can interject the library to the community with partnerships and make it more relevant. So, and, you know, we have a lot of common ground with the K-12 and the young people and with SRP, that's our big thing right now. So, you know, we're here to help the young people as well, because, you know, some are, a lot of them are out of school, so it's a good time to try and keep them to read and then it's not kind of a step back for the teachers when the fall starts again. So, we're hoping to help out with that. So, thank you for being gracious, giving me a few minutes to speak, and I'll be around in presence in the community, so thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for coming tonight. And if we can do anything, please don't hesitate to reach out, because it's all about the boys and girls of Coffee County and them reading more. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Financial report. We have several reports for tonight. Ms. Yawn, we want to present the financials.
Yes, sir. This is the financial report through July 1st, 2018 through May 31st, 2019. The cash balance was sixteen million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and four dollars and forty-nine cents. We began the fiscal year FY19 with a balance of twelve million, four hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. And at this time, May 31st, 2019, we have a fund equity of sixteen million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-six cents.
Right. Next report. The comparison that shows where we compare to FY16, 17, 18, and now the current year. Pretty good financial position as compared to where we were at four years ago, so that's a good thing. The next report is the details. Describe the details here for us, Ms. Yawn.
Yes, on the first page here is our revenue. And you can see as our local, state, and federal that we've received. And as of May 31, we've received fifty-six million, one hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. We are working through our closing process. We are closing out purchase orders. We're working with the different departments to make sure all the purchase orders are closed out so that we can finalize the June report, which will be finalized in September and we have to submit to the DOE. On the next section, you see the expenditures. So, as of May 31, our expenditures are at fifty-two million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. We'll be posting, finalizing our July and August payroll accruals that will affect our expenditures for those months, for the month of June. And then you can come on down to the next page. You can see the fund equity there is sixteen million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-six cents.
The next report is the East Plough summary. And this May was a good bit ahead of where we were the last several years in May. People were spending money. Any questions about this report? If it pleases the board, we'll place this on the agenda for the regular monthly meeting and the consent agenda. All right. Facilities update. We have Dr. Banks here tonight and Mr. Michael Spikes here tonight. I thought it would be good to update the board on where we're at, some of our facility projects that are going on. So, gentlemen, if y'all want to take the floor and conduct your presentation.
We've done a few of the, we've got the security ground, and this is just a few of the things that we've done. This is a storefront enclosure we put at the ninth grade campus. Let me go to the next slide. That's just another view inside the office looking out into the lobby. This is some fencing we added around Ambrose that actually is on the landline, our property line. It separates the campus from the fields and the woods that surrounds the school. That's just another picture of the same fence. That's another picture of the same property. Performing Arts Center, I talked with Josh the other day, and these are the chairs that's going inside the Performing Arts Center. They're in, they're in the basement, ready to be installed or waiting to be installed. They're...
We did, we did test those chairs out when they brought the demo in. I think I sat in one, and you sit down in it. Would you sit down? I sat, and I know the big supervisor out there, the superintendent on the job, he's a big guy, was he about six, six-six, six-seven? He sat out in and sprawled out, and so he was fairly comfortable. He should be after.
This is a picture of the lobby as it was two weeks ago. I'm sure there's a lot changed since then. Again, this is outside of the main entrance, kind of looking from, you would be standing at the media center looking towards the Performing Arts Center. This is another one of the lobby, looking back west towards the media center. This is from the balcony looking down onto the stage. This is just, this is a staging area, I guess it's where the loading dock is at the back of the Performing Arts Center. As we come in from the back, this is where supplies or props or whatever would be brought in. And this is a picture of the stage, actually looking in from the hallway to the back of the stage. We've done some renovations of the, let me hit on this, so they're waiting to do the testing and balance on the air conditioners at the Performing Arts Center. Once they're done, they'll hang the sheetrock. That's what they're waiting on now is to get the air conditioners running and then they have to test the balance, or else they can't, there's no access to them after they're, the sheetrock's installed, so they've got to do all that before they start installing sheetrock. But I think they're about two weeks away from getting that completed. This is, we, the nurses office at Westbury needed some help, and I don't know that we give it a lot, but we did free up some room and some access to get in and out and install them their own air conditioner, because they were getting cooled and heated by an air conditioner from a server, which usually stays colder than it needs to. So, we installed their own, and we took out a door and we changed it. Actually, at the back of that picture on the right, you see a birch cabinet. That was a door, but in order to go out of it, you had two doors running into each other, and you had to, you had to jump to get through there. So, we took out a wall, extended the room a little bit and made it to where you have better access into that ring. The guys come in next week to, or week after next to put the tile in, replace the tile in there, and then they'll wax it. It's been painted, usually been tiled. Eastside, we got an issue last summer with the floor buckle in the entrance of the school. We didn't have time when we discovered it. We didn't have time to get anything done with it, so we put it off to this summer, but they came yesterday, or day before yesterday, started busting the floor up. And if y'all remember, there was two oak trees in front of the school, and when they got the concrete up, there were roots up under the concrete that was actually pushing the floor up, causing the door not to shut like it should, and cracked into the tile. And there was a good inch or so of hump there that could have been a trip hazard. We changed it for the next, and that's some of the roots that came out from under the cement once they got it tore out. We changed it. This is the floor being re-poured, and once it dries, which it needs to dry longer than we have time for it to, we're going to, probably in the next three weeks, we're going to replace the tile in there. We can't wait to 30 days to let it cure. This was a sidewalk, something that the principal had asked about, this on the south side of Eastside coming off of the playground. It's always, that section's always been just a drop-off. And why, I don't know. The canopy pole was wider than the cement. So, while they were there and they had the concrete, we went ahead and pulled it and filled that in where we had a wider sidewalk without a trip hazard. And at Indian Creek, Jim had came, it's been several months back, and one of his suggestions was where the bus drop-off was, where the kids came out that walkway was to put a gate, with a self-closing gate, with a panic device and all that, that you actually have teacher's keys below, and it keeps access, people from coming in between the school and cafeteria. So, they installed that a few weeks ago, and it's, I think that'll help a lot with the security of that school. That's basically it. They're going to, we've got bids out for the Coffee Mudd, Coffee High, and that's going to be the night.
And I did want to talk to the board about the respraying of the parking lots at Coffee High. I don't know if you all have been out there and noticed the grass growing up and the cracking in the parking lots and the painting is terrible. It hadn't been redone in, I don't know how long. But the parking lots, disrepair around Coffee High School, and so the bids that's out will be to, there's three, there's one main project and two add alternates is the way it was. The one main would be the parking lot where the new Performing Arts Center is going to be, and the main student parking lot, the largest parking lot. And add alternate number two is the roadway that goes into the circle and around the flagpole where it's at. And add alternate number three is going where the bus drop-off is at, goes around the backside where the band room is at and the ag classrooms are at. So, we put that out for bid. Going into this year, we had, I don't know if you all remember when we had our budget meeting about East Plough, we had a number in there about doing the parking lots at Coffee High School. The project for the renovations have not come back yet and to start the interior of the building, but we wanted to go ahead and try to get something done this summer. And if we could get on the parking lots, we wanted to go ahead and get those out for bid, and it's out there. They'll come back July 9th, the responsible bidders, and we'll open those on the 9th. And that's just for overspray and restrikt, but it should make it look basically like brand-new parking lots.
They're going to fill the cracks.
Steel coating.
What you do, Phil, they're going, they're going to fill the cracks.
So, we won't have a meeting at that time unless we need to have a called meeting to accept the bids, or if we get the bids in and I could contact y'all and if we had your blessings to move forward, just depending on what the dollar amount is, I guess that would be the biggest piece. But I did want to have that discussion with y'all tonight about being ready to act one way or the other, whether or not y'all give your blessings to move forward depending on the dollar amount, or if we need to have a called meeting to get your official approval. But just wanted, we can have more discussion about that later, but I did want to go ahead and introduce that idea tonight.
Is bond money we're using for?
This will be, yeah, East Plough's money, basically bond money, yeah.
If we're going to do it, we just need to do it before the kids sign come back. That's the reason for the road, something.
That's right. We were anticipating being able to get into the interior part of the building, but that's just not come to fruition. I talked with the architect last week, and he's waiting on some of the engineering specs to come back on the interior, so we hope it'll be the next week or two, get that out. But in the meantime, we'd like to get this parking lot worked on, so.
And Michael's team has done a lot of work at Ambrose this summer, too, preparing for our new protectors and boards. They've got the old boards down, poles, patches of the walls, remade, and we just went on the boards. They'll be here when we get back after our happy holidays.
One more thing, so the cleaning company, I talked with them yesterday, they said they was about 95% complete, the classrooms, stripping and waxing, removing furniture back in, and we're way ahead of what we've ever been as far as schools, the floor being prepared for school construction. Because classrooms is the worst part, always, is to be, we have been down to the wire in the past trying to get lots and boards, but they're, I think they're well ahead of schedule. From what I've seen, everything looks great, so.
The feedback I've got from some of the employees is positive regarding the management.
I think they have some support. They have support now that they know where.
All right. Facility updates. Well, thank you. Any questions, board members? Special Ed curriculum purchase. We have Dr. Dana Bickers here, who is over special services to discuss this curriculum purchase.
Good afternoon. I am here to ask your approval for the purchase of a new curriculum for our elementary self-contained classes. We have a company that we have been working with for a number of years, and they have come out with a new product that seems to be something that we are very much in need of, and this particular product would be to improve reading for our self-contained students. It would come with teachers' guides, manipulative kits, a classroom library of over a thousand books that would be at three different levels for our students. And it also helps the teachers with developing IEP goals. With this purchase, we would also get some training for our teachers on using the product and some coaching throughout the year as well. This product goes hand-in-hand with the Georgia Standards of Excellence, and so, anyway, I'm just here to ask your approval for that purchase. Any questions? Is this taking a place or something, or in addition to resources we already have? Kind of both. The product that we have been using, it will complement it in those particular classrooms, so it will go hand-in-hand. There is another product that we have been using in addition to for elementary that we would not continue to use right now. It's one that has primarily been online, and our teachers only had access that way. They did not have teacher materials, teacher guides, or the classroom set for the students to use, the textbooks or reading books. And we just felt like this was more beneficial for what we're needing right now. We will continue to use the other product for middle and high school, just because this particular product is only elementary at this time. They're developing middle and high school, and we're hoping eventually, you know, to use that in curriculum as well, but for right now, this would just take elementary level.
All right. If there's no objection, we'll place that on the consent agenda for approval.
Federal funds, but they can pay in fact. There you go.
All right. The FY20 Family Connection contract. This is the annual contract that we asked the board to approve to provide support for Family Connection, and this is a program that benefits our students and the whole community. April Thompson, who heads up Family Connection, she works closely with multiple organizations, I would say probably 10 to 15 different agencies in town, Unison, Deepags, multiple agencies she works with. Latest activity has been involving the faith community and the Know Your Worth campaign, the Champs campaign, so this, approval of this contract's allowed us to continue to have and support and service the fiscal action of Family Connection. There's no objection. We'll place this on the consent agenda. Surplus property. We have, Dr. Newell has a surplus property request. He has approximately 500 of the in-computing devices that are being phased out, and we're asking the board to declare these surplus property, and Chan tells us that they're, these are currently pretty popular out in the jungles of South America and places like that, so.
They run on 12 volts DC, so there's still a demand in parts of the world, and we're going to put these on gut deals and see what kind of response we get. We had 2,500, approximately 2,500 of these when we started about seven years ago, and we still have about half of those still in service, and they're still working well, but the service that they're running on are reaching end of life next February, so we'll be phasing the rest of those out over the next few months. Just like this first batch out there, others for the follow.
And the in-computing has been a success story. There was a time when we were a little nervous there at the very beginning. There were some glitches with the department education, some of their software, but once we got it going, they worked out really well, would you say, Dr. Newell?
Yes, sir. But I have to still run it, I'll need to go back.
All right. If there's no objections, we'll place that on the consent agenda, and hopefully some folks, third-world parts and workers will be able to take advantage of it. All right. Bids. We have the milk bids here, and Ms. Yawn has been working with Ms. Melanie Weathers, who is our point of contact for school nutrition currently, to secure the milk bid. Ladies, would y'all like to describe the milk bid for the board?
We sent out a milk bid last month, and we sent it out to three different bidders, but only two responded. We had a response from Williams Distribution, as well as Barber Dairy, who is currently our milk provider. And as you can see, Williams, Williams came in at a higher bid than Barber Dairy, but we are, we are recommending that we go with Williams, because we've had many product issues and delivery issues from Barber this past year, and we have documentation from said issues. That's why we recommend that we go with the higher bidder on Barber, from Barber's.
Question?
Yes, sir.
You were having problems. Why would you let them bid?
Because it was, that is our state milk bid, bidder, and so it went out to everyone to bid. It was put on the register for everyone to be able to bid.
It's registered for everybody, you know, except the dairy.
How long we've been using these things?
We have been using them for three years. We used Boarding before that, and then we used the Mayfield before that as well. Mayfield actually, Barber bought out Mayfield, and so that's where we believe some of the issues have come from.
You had issues before this year?
No, sir.
It's just started this year?
Yes, sir.
What kind of issues?
We have late deliveries. We've had where... We've had, um, where there's been days that the milkman hasn't arrived until after we've served, and so if we serve meals, they're not considered reimbursable for our standards without, um, the dairy component. So, um, we've had issues there. We've had issues with, um, the product not being in date. We've had, um, there's been times where they didn't have certain flavors, just different occurring issues.
What has been their response to that when we've reached out?
Um, we reached out to them, and they said that they are trying to work through scheduling. Um, they have, they called some, saying that they are trying to get things worked together, but because May, the Barber bought out Mayfield, they're having, and they shut down a plant, they're having problems getting shipment corrected. And we even have an email back in December from our state director, Nancy Rice, who was, and she sent out, um, recommendations for if we went with the state milk bid, Barber, how we could go and try to fix these problems coming forward with the bid. So, it's an ongoing, it's not just Coffee County, it's an ongoing Georgia problem.
It's an industry issue. It's transportation, it's drivers. Barber or companies like that do what's called direct sales distribution, meaning that somebody owns that route, and they're going to go deliver that, and they're going to spend their time at the account where they make the most money, similar to the bread situation. So, I'm familiar with what you're going through, because...
Yes.
I'm going to have to abstain from this vote. Seal Test, Milco, okay. My company represents Milco as a broker, but we do not represent them in this situation. I don't, we don't earn any brokerage. They have a direct relationship with Williams, so that they can offer competitive pricing to, to K-12. So, even though I don't, my company doesn't receive any compensation whatsoever from sales of Milco Seal Test milk through Williams, I'm just going to abstain from the, but I can tell you this, I know that, that service-wise, Williams does an excellent job for their, their customers.
They do.
The product comes into the schools, this product comes in, and it's never been touched by human hands when it leaves the warehouse. It's Georgia farmers in North Georgia, so it's okay. They're, all dairies are a co-op. I'm not trying to oversell this thing. The company's based in Anderson, North, uh, North Carolina, but they're, they use dairies in Georgia, Tennessee, and North Carolina for their milk. Everything's in cardboard, everything's sealed, everything's dated, um, you know, so, and you have complete control of your inventory, no one else is, you know, we talked about school security, when, you know, how many more trucks do we want on a campus? How many more deliveries do we want on a campus? Um, so, that's, that's one of the advantages of going through their, their current bid supplier. So, there's one delivery, one invoice.
How often do you bid this milk?
We can bid every year, but we have it in our bid that we can roll the bid for up to three consecutive years.
Have we been rolling the bid or we've been bidding every year?
We've been rolling the bid.
Recommend that we go with, with Williams, was the recommendation. I realize it's the higher bid, but, uh, my folks feel like it's the service that we're willing to pay for. We have always bid this, sir?
No, sir. This is something they have, um, just picked up this past year. There are other counties who, who picked up them throughout the mid-year last school year, and so they were able to effectively deliver milk to them on a consecutive basis. And so, they saw the need that was there, because like I said, this is a statewide issue this past year, and so they saw the need and they sat down to try to...
That's good information. Thank you very much. Well, no, we can't, no, we couldn't see it because of...
Yeah. We'll break it out.
Sorry. Thank you.
Audience participation. Is there any audience participation? All right, if there's no audience participation, I'm going to ask the board that we move to an executive session to discuss personnel and the hiring and evaluation of employees, and, uh, also the superintendent's evaluation, and then also to discuss real estate. So, any questions? Oh, move we exit to executive session.
Thank you, Preston. All right. Thank you very much. We will exit executive session.